All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our City of Santa Fe Springs, August 3rd council meeting. Welcome those watching from Zoom. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the housing successor, successor agency and city council to order. City clerk, will call please.
Councilmember Sarno. Councilmember Tohio. Councilmember Zamora.
Here.
Mayor Prater Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Mora.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to call upon city council member Sarno to give the invocation.
Please rise. My head. We direct our thoughts to you, Almighty God, and ask your blessings on everyone present. Please accept our gratitude for our goodness and generosity. Give us wisdom, courage, and foresight to accomplish the work before us. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to call upon a youth leadership committee vice chair Jasmine Rodriguez to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jasmine. Hang on, before you go. Give someone's name and what school you're going to. Okay, thank you so much. Public comment is now open. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please went to the public hearing has been open on that specific item. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that are wishing to speak today?
Mr. Mayor, we have four members of the public that wish to speak today. The first one is Ronald Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Sorry to take the mask off or no? Okay.
Keep it on.
Okay. Good morning, I mean, good afternoon. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ron Wilson. I'm an attorney and practice law here for 40 years. I'm here because of a lawsuit between Central Basin and one of his board members, Letitia Vasquez. This is a frivolous lawsuit. What brings me to Santa Fe Springs is one of the fervent supporters of this lawsuit is your public works director, Mr. Negretti. The purpose for coming here is to encourage you guys to tell him to use whatever influence he has to drop this silly frivolous lawsuit. They're trying to stop Letitia Vasquez from speaking. She sent videos about two things, videos and letters about two things. A meter charge from Central Basin that was declared illegal by Superior Court and also about contaminants in the water. Her board members disagreed with her, so they decided to sue her, try to get an injunction to stop her from talking. They've been before two judges. This is Central Basin versus board member. Two different judges, June 10th, June 30th. Judge Michael Becklaw threw the case out, took him about a half hour. Judge in Department 82. Her name will come to be in a minute. She also threw it out. The problem with the lawsuit is she's simply telling the truth. She has a right to free speech. You cannot get an injunction against someone from speaking freely. The end result of this lawsuit, they'll lose. They'll not only pay Robert Baker, their general counsel's attorney's fees, they'll pay my attorney's fees also. The judge looked at the videos online before the hearing. She read the letters that they're complaining about. There's nothing in them. There's no violation of the administrative code. There's nothing improper about the letters. It's her voicing her opinion, which is different from the majority of the board. Of course, they control the purse spring, so they can hire a lawyer to file such a frivolous lawsuit. They claim that, I guess it's their feelings that are hurt, is all I can get out of it. They're suing, claiming that she's defaming them, that she's making them look bad. There is no such lawsuit. I can come to Santa Fe Springs, I can go to New York, I can talk about the city or the state or the county. There is no such lawsuit as defamation. You're free to call California anything you want. You're free to call New York anything you want. You're free to call Central Basin anything you want. Now, in the lawsuit, they don't claim that what she said is false, they just don't like it. So, I'm here for you guys, hopefully, to speak to Negretti, to get to the bottom of this, tell them to drop the lawsuit. She has a right to free speech. They're wasting taxpayers' money. Two different judges have heard the case and thrown it out and they continue on. So, that's it, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Mayor. We have Letitia Vasquez next.
Letitia Vasquez, okay. Please say your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Letitia Vasquez. I'm one of eight members of the Central Basin Board and I come before you to request that you speak to your public works director who was recently appointed to the Central Basin Board of Directors by a few cities. And apparently, because I disagree with the majority of the board, there's this effort to silence me. And actually, this lawsuit is just one example of it. As many of you may know, our region has been impacted greatly by PFOS and PFOA, which is a contaminant in the local water supplies, in the local water supply. In actually, Pico Rivera, your city, the city of Downey as well. So, we've had a couple of activists that have been talking about the issue, hoping that some of the cities will address it. And so, I was interviewed by a local blogger and he posted the interviews of the issue online. And I also wrote a letter to your city council regarding a meter charge that I voted against. But that was pushed by the appointed purveyors on our board, including the position that Mr. Negretti sits on. They spearheaded the effort to raise the water rates and pass this meter charge. And three months later, those same appointed purveyors and other cities decided to sue Central Basin over that illegal meter charge. I believe I wrote you a letter regarding that meter charge when the board was set to vote, to take a public vote on that meter charge. And so, those are the things that are included in the lawsuit. I want to give you a copy of the lawsuit. It's here so that you can have a copy for yourselves, so that you can browse it at your leisure. I also have a response, my response to the lawsuit here, which is quite lengthy. However, I do encourage you to take a look at it. We recently received a bill for legal fees to the tune of $175,000 for my lawyer. And so, I know that, like you, I'm very concerned, we are concerned about the water rates. These legal bills will be paid for by the residents and the rate peers of Santa Fe Springs, Downey, Pico Rivera, and all of the cities that are serviced by the Central Basin. So, I come before you to ask that you speak to your public works director and that you take a look at this lawsuit and then you urge him to encourage our board to stop this. Thank you.
Another speaker?
Mayor, I'm not sure if they're here, Rodolfo Cortez. Going to go ahead and check if he's here. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
Thank you. All right, since there are no other speakers, we will not close public comment and move on to the next item. Also, there are no items considered under the housing successor and successor agency agendas, so we'll go on to the next agenda. Item number six, city council agenda, we have one consent item. For the minutes of the July 8th, 2021 special council meeting, is there a motion?
I'll move, Joe Angel, Earl second, Jerry.
Thank you. Those in favor? Those opposed? So ordered, public hearing item number seven, alcohol sales conditional use permit case number 78. Like to call upon Director of Police Services, Dino Torres.
Hello, good evening. City municipal code section 155.628 requires all businesses engaged in the sale, storage, or manufacture of alcohol to apply for and be granted an alcohol sales conditional use permit. CUPK 78 involves a new business called LA Gift Baskets and they're located at 13724 Borate Street. What they do is assemble gift baskets like the ones we typically see during the holidays that include snacks, food, and alcohol. The type of alcohol license that they are applying for with the ABC is a type 21 and this license gives privileges to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits in packaged form for consumption off the retail establishments. Next slide please. Here we have an aerial snapshot and street view of the location. It's south of Rosecrans and west of Morcourt in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. The building will contain an office area, gift basket assembly area, storage area, and a showroom to display the merchandise. It's about one acre in size, 22,000 square feet and surrounded by similar type warehouse properties. As part of the review process, staff examines possible negative impacts. In this case, there were none identified. There are 15 conditions of approval put together by staff that are standard for this type of use. Some of those are removal of graffiti, security plan, alarm system, abiding by all codes, including state, ABC, fire, et cetera. Next slide please. The CEP was recommended for approval by the planning commission in July. The recommendations to the council are that they approve this permit subject to the conditions in the resolution and adopt the resolution. That concludes my report. Sure. Yeah, it's, they're not, they're not for that, it's delivery. So, it's not open to the public. Their operation hours are from 8 to 5, but it's, but it's not open to the public. So, you can go online or they, or they send it to you.
So, they have delivery trucks coming back.
Are they going to be based out of Santa Fe Springs?
I don't know if they have another operation, but I know this one is here on Borate. So, yeah, so they're going to be having those baskets in that here in Santa Fe Springs.
My thing is because of where we've been used to is we have them doing all of this stuff, but there's another city that they have their small office on and we're not going to get any of the tech, any of the taxes or anything like that.
She's talking about his point of sales, right?
The point of sale, yeah. Will it be through us?
Yeah, that, I don't know how specific that is. But no, at this point, it's just an operation that's here in Santa Fe Springs, gift baskets. They don't expect a lot of sales, but they have that.
Good job, Dino.
Yeah.
It's pretty likely that they will have a point of sale there, if they're selling from that place. So, we'll find out, but I'm pretty sure it will be.
Any other questions? Okay, public hearing is now open. Do we have any speakers on this item?
We don't have any speakers.
We will not close public hearing. Is there a motion for the approval of item number seven? Thank you. Those in favor?
All right.
I. Those opposed? So ordered, item number eight, appropriation of funds from the city's art and public places fund for the city's art education grant program for fiscal year 2021, 22. I'd like to call upon Family and Human Services Manager, Ed Ramirez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Each year, schools in Santa Fe Springs have the opportunity to submit applications requesting funds to the art education grant. That's, excuse me, that supports art education programs. The Heritage Arts Advisory Committee reviews and submits the qualified applications to Santa Fe Springs. You go ahead and change the slide, please. Unfortunately, in 2020, as you know, the program faced an unprecedented year that resulted from COVID-19 that many local schools did, were unable to submit for these grants since they were not either in school or couldn't do this because they were missing learning. Now, the return of school is happening this year. The advisory has actually reviewed, received, and reviewed 20 applications at the last meeting of July 7th, July 27th. So, this evening, I'm here. There's a fiscal impact here. I'm here to share with you, the Heritage Arts Advisory Committee is recommending funding 20 grants totaling $36,769.32. There are sufficient funds available on the public art fund, which has been established through developer fees and no general fund and monies are used to provide these funds. So, my recommendations are the recommendations this evening is to approve the appropriation of funds for the city art and public places program activity. Any questions?
Thank you. We have a motion for the approval, item number eight.
I'll move.
Second? Those in favor? I. Those opposed? So ordered, item number nine, COVID-19 memorial area of the Heritage Springs Park. I'd like to call upon Director of Public Works, Noe Negretti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, at the mayor's request, we were asked to look at establishing a potential area to honor those victims who have passed away from the COVID-19 pandemic. So, what we did is we took a look at the different places in the city where we can have such an area and community services staff, public work staff, looked at Heritage Park as being the best place for that. The aesthetics of the park, serene environment, more of a reflection area for that. So, what I bring before you is actually two locations within the park where we're looking at putting a bench. Let me show you the bench first. So, there is a wood bench in the, on the backing, there's an insignia that says, "In memory of those who lost their lives to the pandemic." And we looked at two different areas in the park. So, as you first drive in, the first area is just to the right of the train depot and it would be facing towards the Rose Garden, if you know where that area is. And I have a few pictures of that. The second area is closer to the Native American Exhibit. Both areas were selected because it was a close proximity to the sidewalk. But more importantly, it was in a shady area that gave those people that would want to sit on the bench a view to reflect. So, going back to the first area, as you can see, the item number one there. So, if you look at the west view, that's if you're sitting on the bench, looking into the park, looking towards the Rose Garden area. Looking to the east would be behind you. Like you see the south view, that yellow building there, that's the train depot area, that'd be to your back. It'll be just to the east of the area where we have the turf area for the weddings and the special events. Again, as you can see, highly shaded area, there is a sidewalk that's in close proximity. We would essentially put the bench in an area to keep the sidewalk wide enough for people to walk and for maintenance vehicles still to have access in that area. Second area that we looked at is closer to the Native American Exhibit. There's a large trees, you can see on the north view there. The north view is looking back towards the Native American Exhibit. And the east view, if you can see the upper left-hand quarter, corner is where the conservator is. So, that gives you pretty much a great view of the park, looking into the park. Again, kind of meets the same criteria. It's in a shaded area next to the sidewalk, in an area where we can put the bench where it's not going to impede that sidewalk for either walkers or for maintenance. So, unless you have another location, that is the staff recommendation, one of those two areas. So, we are looking for feedback from you tonight as to either selecting one of those two areas to move forward with. Happy to take any questions.
My biggest question is, because it is wood, to keep it out of the sun? And the maintenance, just to make sure that we maintain it or oil it or I don't know how we're gonna?
Yes, so we did treat it with some special wood. That's something we're going to be mindful of as we do put it out there. We also want to make sure the leaves or what any kind of debris doesn't damage that bench as well. So, it's something that we will keep an eye on. At this point, that hasn't been discussed, just the insignia that does kind of serve for all, not individual residents at this time.
In a few minutes, we're going to hear about our virtual memorial that will be having names on it. So, it's going to be on our website. So, just a few more minutes, we'll talk about that.
I was just wondering, I know that we're using proposed areas Heritage Park, but I know because, like, you know, Jay brought up the point of wood and that's what I was thinking about too, that you're going to probably have different individuals, you know, kids, whoever may be, just whether it be standing on it or doing things. I mean, something like this, I mean, is there any way, like, you know, the Clark Estate, especially right behind the parking lot of the library right here? I mean, there's just that area that we have nothing there. I mean, it's more of a symbol where we can all utilize that little area. I mean, even we can bring in other different memorials. I mean, I know that we have, you know, Big John and Big Jim that passed away, you know, looking at other memorials that we can do probably in that area of the Clark Estate. It's right, I don't know if you guys know, right behind the Clark Estate, right when you pull into the parking, to the right, there's that vacant area right there.
So, how would they get in there to see it?
Inside the Clark Estate?
Well, you have inside, but you could probably get it off and just open, you know, have it where it's a door, but you know what I mean? It's just, it's just the fact of having it more secluded where somebody just can't do anything to it. Mess with it in general because you're, this is something that we hope that this never happens again. You know, when it comes to any, you know, any loved ones that we have in our, in our life, it's just more meaningful just to make sure we take care of it.
What about in the garden and what about in the library garden?
That's fine. Library garden is another good place.
That way.
Yeah, people can utilize it there. Yeah. Exactly. Guard it, at least that we can just protect it and, you know.
I'm okay with either one, it doesn't, I'm okay with the Clark Estate or, I mean, the garden or, I just think, the Clark Estate's a good idea, but I don't think everybody will get to utilize it because they won't be able to get in there.
I just think it being here, just the fact closer to City Hall itself, you know? I mean, even if we put it somewhere on City Hall property, I mean, I would even go for that.
By the veterans? In that whole area and you see.
Yeah, exactly.
Not necessarily, that's such a great point, though. A lot of it is just security, right? We have a lot of eyes at that park. We see a lot less vandalism at that park because of the people that utilize that park and because of the rangers that are there. The aesthetics, I guess, I think that's one of our best places for aesthetics in the city. Tranquility and the kind of overall serenity, it's not, it's not really a celebratory public park, if that makes sense. But we're open to other options.
Also, are we going to plan on like, because one leader was asking about names, are we going to maybe try to do like a memorial wall? Or are we just going to leave it as that, just the bench itself as the memorial and that's it?
Could we recess maybe like a QR code on there? So, it'll be, it could be updated. QR code on the bench? And then so, when people just, and then it goes directly to the, I guess, the virtual wall that they were talking about?
Oh, yeah, they're going to do a virtual wall. But we can.
Instead of adding names on the bench itself, it's just.
We can talk about that and maybe when we, under the executive team reports, Ray Lane's going to have a discussion on the virtual wall. So, maybe we can have a discussion about how that will work together. But I think having brass plates on there, I think, may distract from the look of it.
Not on the bench, like a wall, like they have the.
Oh, wall.
Like, we can do minimum.
Yeah, and that's been problematic because it's run out of space and we were talking to council member Rodriguez about making bricks near there to replace that podium.
Working on that for the women's club. Yeah, we ran out of space. Is, are the two benches, so we're not having any ideas to have another bench at, say, Los Nettles Park? Or it's just going to be there at the Heritage Park because of the reasons that Noah had stated?
Usually, we have a memorial, you have it one site. I mean, that's up to the council, of course, but I've never seen it where we had it two locations, but it was just for this one.
And how big is the bench? Is it, you know, what is the size of it?
My size can sit on it.
Okay.
That helps you. Not small, how's that?
So, three of Dino's?
What a good staff.
So, you guys want to try to do it here or you guys, you want to allow them to do it there? What do you guys want to?
Well, it should be in an area that's, that's open, but yet, you know, he had mentioned there's security because Heritage Park, everything gets locked up at night. And then Clark Estate, I mean, it's a, those are beautiful grounds in there too. But then there may be more of a non-resident that may be in there or if it's, or are you talking inside the grounds or on the other side?
But it's right here, there's, I don't know if anybody's seen that whole square area. I mean, unless we're going to bring the bungalows.
How about we wait until the parking lot's done and.
Yeah.
Because in the meantime, we could even put the bench inside City Hall and then from there, you know, progress it, you know, outside.
It could be previewed in our lobby, to start.
Either way, even if we put it inside the library, you can put it inside City Hall, it's a public place that a lot of people utilize. And I think it's just, I mean, I mean personally, I mean, now that I think about it, the library would probably be the best fit because we're going to talk about the history of what happened in Santa Fe Springs and that's part of our history. You know, where people need to be aware of what took place in 2020. I mean, it's something that cannot be forgotten. It's kind of like 9/11, other than that, but we all had this personal effect, you know, that literally, you know, wherever we went, there was that fear and, you know. So, I just think, just letting our little ones, our kids know, you know, hey, the heritage of Santa Fe Springs. So, I mean, if we can put it, it's only a bench, so if we could put it in the library, that'd probably be much better inside the library.
Yeah, we didn't look at anything indoors, so if that's the direction you would like us to do, we could do that.
Or probably preserve the bench a little bit longer too, because it's indoors.
The problem with the garden, and the garden's a good spot too, but it is closed, well, the library's closed, right? And you also have the Caesar Chavez bench that's already there. So, maybe you want to add that to there, that could be an idea as well, although we could look inside.
Yeah, inside would be better because the kids can sit on it, you know what I mean? They can still utilize it, the parents can sit and read on it, but still, it becomes a talking point of, you know, what happened in life. You know what I mean? What happened, you know, you never know, 15, 20 years from now, you know, the next generation of, you know, parents are going to be able to talk to their, talk to their kids and say, this is what we lived through, this is what happened. So, I think the library would probably be the best educational, most effective, most impact because that's where most of our residents go, they go to the library a lot. No, it's too small. Yeah.
It's very underutilized area, it's not really accessible to the public. You have to, you have to go through the offices to, you know, go in there.
Keep it in the library for right now and then.
Keep it in the library for right now, then once we figure out, you know, where we can put it somewhere else, if not, just keep it there.
Like us to put, find a place that we business best and put it there or do you want me to come back with the presentation?
Find a good place, trust you, where you can, you know, you and Dino can sit on it and.
Yeah. In the library.
Thanks.
Thanks, Noe.
Thank you, Noe.
No friends, you don't need enemies there.
Thank you, Noe. Is there a motion for the approval of location for bench for the memorial?
Yeah, with the amendment.
Leave it to library.
Inside the library. I'll move.
I second.
Thank you. Those in favor?
All right.
I, those opposed? So I'd like to call upon City Manager Ray Cruz.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Over the last 13 years, cities across the state have struggled with their ever-increasing CalPERS retirement obligations. The city of Santa Fe Springs has not been immune to the same financial pressures with its own financial obligation. But the city councils over this time period have made a number of prudent fiscal decisions that stabilized and expanded the city's finances. Regardless of these actions, the city needs to continue to be diligent in monitoring its CalPERS obligation. CalPERS investments now need to achieve a 6.8% discount rate or greater. If they do not reach that rate, the city's obligation goes up for that fiscal year. Due to this Federal Reserve's very low interest rates, cities are paying off their CalPERS obligation by purchasing pension obligation bonds. This in theory can save a city a significant amount of money if market conditions do not fluctuate much. Many cities such as Montebello, West Colina, in Ontario have issued these type of bonds. Many others are in the midst of completing the transaction like the city of Whittier. Although becoming a very popular financial tool for cities to deal with their pension obligations, the Governmental Finance Officers Association continue to oppose their use. They believe these bonds are very complicated and speculative instruments that put their organizations at too much risk. The city's finance department is reviewing the merits of utilizing pension obligation bonds now, but are being very cautious in their evaluation. In the upcoming months, the city council is going to start hearing a lot about pension obligation bonds at meetings, conferences, and news reports. Therefore, staff will be soon be meeting with the city council, discuss the merits of the bonds and the real risks they impose on an organization. At the end of these discussions, a decision will be made if we should be, if we should be considering them or not. At this time, I'd like to bring up Public Relations Specialist Ray Lane Borassa.
Good evening, Mayor Mora, members of the council. Lives and normalcy as we knew it were forever changed when the world was hit with the global pandemic of the novel coronavirus. It is an unfortunate reality to think of all the lives that were taken too soon due to this horrific virus. At the request of Mayor Mora and under the direction of City Manager Ray Cruz, city staff came together to develop a memorial to honor Santa Fe Springs residents and employees that have passed away due to the coronavirus. According to the LA County Department of Public Health website, there are 38 reported deaths of Santa Fe Springs residents. In conjunction with the memorial bench that will be placed at Heritage Park, staff also wanted to incorporate a virtual component to honor the lives and legacy of those that have passed. A virtual memorial wall will be placed on the city website. The only requirement to participate in the virtual memorial wall is that the deceased must be a resident or employee of the city of Santa Fe Springs. The virtual memorial wall will feature a photo of the deceased along with their full name and a section to share the deceased's favorite quote, memories, or the impact they made in the community. The virtual wall is a small but heartfelt tribute to pay respect to those lives that were taken due to the coronavirus. It is with hope that the memory shared on this memorial wall will bring peace and comfort to the families and friends grieving the loss of their loved ones. The city of Santa Fe Springs mourns with you as city staff lost one of their very own fellow employees, Andrew Rodriguez, to the coronavirus. The city extends sincere condolences to all that have been affected. This virtual memorial wall will be promoted on the city's social media platforms as early as the last week of August and in the city's September, October newsletter, as well as the winter quarterly. Staff will be sure to provide a phone number to accommodate residents that may not have access to digital devices, so they may participate in the virtual memorial wall as well. So now, council, at this time, I would like to show you what exactly the virtual memorial wall will consist of. So this will be the welcome page of the COVID remembrance page. It pretty much just gives a brief description of what I shared with you just a couple moments ago. And there is a link at the bottom where they will be directed to the online submission form where we will ask the applicant's information as far as their first and last name, their address and email, phone number, and the loved one that passed away, their name and address, and just the, to share some brief memories about them as well. And we are requiring three options for photos, just in case we have issues with the photo quality. So this will be the online submission form. And then this is an example of what the virtual wall would look like. There's an option to submit the photo, and there's the name at the top. You could see the quote underneath and just a brief memory or impacts that the deceased made in the community. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I wanted to say that that is really nice and, you know, it's, it's beautiful because people can go on there. And like you said, if, if you don't have internet service or the person is older, they, they don't want to learn how to use the internet, maybe we could do something to help them, to show them what's on there.
Yes, we can assist them where we could collect the photo from them and we could upload the information on their behalf. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, this is nice. Thank you.
And I just want to thank IT's staff, especially Jeff Bailey, for assisting with this project.
I have a question, Bob, Jeff. I'm just, when, when they do the submission, are we going to make sure, like, what's the process of us going, doing our part to make sure as a city that we got proper authorization from the actual family, caregivers, or whoever may be that are the responsible parties of giving that authority?
We can include, we do have a photo release form, so that's a good point that you brought up. We can incorporate that as well. That way we have rights to the photo that's being used. So we can include that.
We may check with our city attorney.
Check with our city attorney, do whatever legalities we need to do to make sure that we incorporate anything that protects us and protects the families.
Definitely. Okay.
Ray Lane, thank you.
Thank you, Ray. And I'd like to bring up Director of Public Works, Noah Negrete.
Just to clean it now.
Many jobs here.
The Noah Ray Lane Show.
Thank you, Ray Lane. Just a few things to report since our last meeting. As you're aware, the ball field lights at Los Nettles Park have been on for the last couple of months to improve the safety of that area, in particular, along Broadhead and Miller Grove. So we had, what we had done is there was some safety lights up on top of the ball field lights. Some of you that did a walkthrough noticed those lights were not operational. So those were changed out. Got a few pictures showing you what that looks like at nighttime. And also, we installed video cameras as well. So these pictures are actually from the actual video camera, as you can see, they're at 2:00, 2:30 in the morning. That's on Broadhead, looking to the east, looking northeast. Second picture is on Miller Grove, looking south. So you can see how, how bright both streets are. And the last one is at the corner, where Broadhead and Miller Grove don't meet. So you can see there the difference, and that's just with the safety lighting on, not with the ball field lights on. Okay, so what we want to make you aware of is it's starting tomorrow night. We're going to turn off the ball field lights and we're going to leave the safety lighting on, and that's the condition that it's going to be in. And again, we do have the video cameras also that are operational there to give us eyes should an incident or an issue arise at that park at that location. So thank you, thank you to council members, I forget it was Jay and Joe Angel, yes, that walked out with the staff, pointed that out. So we're hoping that this does improve the safety of that area of the park.
Question, I don't know if you guys are okay? Maybe we can do something on our, on our website that actually like just says smile, you're on camera, but letting people know that these cameras are there. So then it lets, you know, hopefully the word of mouth allows everybody else to know that they're actually being recorded if they're anywhere close to that park. You know what I mean? So just for security measures.
Do we put signs up already or no?
Just want to remind the council that they use their microphones so it could be heard from the public.
So maybe we just put up signs just to say this, this field is being recorded or this.
Are you under surveillance or something?
Surveillance, under surveillance?
As long as we have something that shows, because then later on, we just don't want to.
So maybe we can get some signage of, of cameras, camera.
Smile on those Nettles camera.
Yeah.
I'll work with police services and our city attorney and the captain to make sure whatever signage we have is appropriate out there.
Thank you guys for getting on that too. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, guys.
My kids play there now on softball and it's great because the lighting is perfect because they have, you know, late games and stuff and it's lit up and you feel safe going over there. So thank you.
I'm Noah.
Item number two is that, one more thing, sorry, the show continues.
Nice. Thank you. I'm sure the community enjoys it now too.
He, he says that because right now they turn on at roughly 7:30 and they, they shut off at 2:00, the ball field lights. And, and the safety lights stay on. So we've been testing them the last weeks. They, they work so now. As soon as the games are over, the ball field lights will shut off, the safety lights will stay on. Okay, thanks, Kevin. Next one is, we did have a pretty major water leak over on Lakeland. So the initial leak was actually repaired by in-house staff. If you know the area between Bloomfield and Greenstone, that's where the, the leak occurred. There's a railroad tracks right in the middle. The leak was on the west side of the railroad tracks, closer to the Bloomfield side. So staff was made aware of this in the morning, able to shut the water off, fix the leak, and then went to turn the water back on. A valve was in a stuck position. Unable to turn the valve, now it started getting closer to 5:00. And that crew had been working there all day. So we're going to be bringing to you an on-call emergency repair contract that we're still evaluating. But we actually had to call one of those contractors Monday evening to get them to come in. Was it, one of the new contractors we hadn't worked with, they jumped on it. We thought was going to be an easy fix to just basically do a cut. There's an eight-inch main, which is, I just didn't know how to do this pointer here. Okay, we used to have a pointer. Picture on the right is the eight-inch pipe, if you see with the guy in the orange shirt at the very bottom. And the picture to the lower left is actually an 18-inch pipe. There's two water lines on that street. So what we did is we bypassed it, put in a new valve and connected the eight to the 18 in order to get, I think there was five to six customers that were out of water, starting on Monday. It wasn't completed until midday Wednesday in, in the, in the day. So again, those people were patient enough with us. It gave us a good glimpse as to our on-call process, especially with that contractor. And it was able to work out in the end, but it did take two days without water for those businesses. One of them being CRNR, the trash company, which was right, right there where the leak was. And last, it's with a heavy heart that we share with you that the department is in mourning. We, I'm sorry. We did lose a fellow employee, Jim Piloto, in his battle with cancer. We just want to say thank you from the entire department. To the left is a picture, we had a retirement party for him, a little bit unconventional because of his health. But as you can see, we did go to his home and had a car parade for him. The family was much appreciative of that. Want to thank the council for those that attended and also the entire council for letting us do that. It's the first time we've ever had to do something like that and really extraordinary times call for something that we do different. And I think the family and as well as the staff greatly appreciated that. Unfortunately, a week later, Jim did pass. Last week was the services, funeral, mass. And I just want to say thank you from our department for letting us go to that during our normal work times. He did serve the city 36 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Now let's bring up Director Planning, Wayne Moreau.
Thanks, Ray. Couple items real quickly. Honorable mayor, members of the council staff. Just want to highlight a couple businesses in the city. We're only 8.9 square miles, have about 18,000 residents up from 17,000 previously and have about 3,000 businesses. But a lot of the businesses in the city, you may not realize it, but they distribute their product to a lot of different companies. For example, Romero Foods, the supply products, the Von, Walmart, Costco. So again, we're a small city, but some of our businesses, you'll find the products throughout many, many different types of businesses. So Romero Food is one of them. We also have Food Farmer on Pinter Avenue. And if you go to Trader Joe's, for example, you'll find those products in there. They make it, but Trader Joe's then put their name on it. So it appears that it's coming from Trader Joe's, but it's actually manufactured, made in our small city. Another is McKesson on Norwalk Boulevard. Recently, I was in my doctor's office doing some blood work. And then I look at the table and there's a box of gloves that says McKesson. So again, it's a, you would think it's a small company, it's in a city of Santa Fe Springs. But you find the product not only throughout many of the hospitals and clinics in our city, but also in California, Nevada, you can see the extent of their, of their range. And of course, the last one that I would like to mention is Southern Wine and Spirit. They're the largest distributor of beverage alcohol in the United States. And again, they're in Santa Fe Springs, 8.9 square mile, 18,000 population. But they have, excuse me, largest distributor in California, got carried away and said the United States. But again, they're at Golden Springs, they have close to a million square foot in building space. But they're the largest distributor in, in California. And lastly, I would like to bring it to your attention because I'm sure some of you have driven by and noticed that on Telegraph, yes, what, Pinter and Shoemaker, where the, there's a delineation, you'll notice that the self-storage facility, it's mostly gone. And it looks rather strange, but as it was mentioned to me recently, it was maybe about five or six years ago when they did that entire addition where they redid the exterior. Well, they're now completely demolishing it and that is what is being constructed at this point. So later on, you will see that, that being developed. And also, if you were to drive along Telegraph Road, north of Telegraph, Santa Fe Springs Road, on the west side of the street, you'll notice the oil equipment. So they're in the process of re-abandoning a couple of the wells in preparation for a couple of concrete tilt of buildings that were previously approved. So there's a lot of activity going in the city. We may be small, but our reach is beyond California and other parts of the, of the United States. And this is just a few of the businesses that I've highlighted, but we have many, many other businesses that the product is throughout the state and throughout the United States. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Now let's bring up Director Police Services, Dino Torres.
Hello again. The, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year is upon us and everyone's crossing their fingers and, and hopeful that it will be uninterrupted and, and healthy and a healthy year for the, for the kids that are in school. Uh, the first school to get back will be Santa Fe High and then, uh, Rancho Santa Gertrudas starting next week, uh, followed by the Little Lake Schools that will begin on August eighteenth. As always, staff from our department works with the schools so that they can inform their parents with the proper driving etiquette near schools. And then here's a copy of the flyer that, uh, we hand out to the parents so they can help us keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Flyer, is the flyer in English and Spanish or just?
Uh, it's in, we can make it in Spanish. You wanted it Spanish too?
Double side, it would probably be, would be better. Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you, Dino. I'd like to bring up Fire Chief Brent Hayward.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening. Everybody on the world wide web, good evening. This will be a quick report. Uh, first slide's going to be just a quick review of what's been happening. And again, I'm doing snapshots now of how things have changed in the last sixty days. Uh, if you look on the left, COVID positivity rate was at zero point four percent. Hospital average admissions, two hundred and fifty-four, and average deaths for that period of time, two months ago, was at nine. Today, uh, we're at five point six one percent positivity rate. Hospital rate average is almost eleven hundred, which is well over two. My math is terrible. That's about four times higher than what you see on the left-hand side. Uh, and then today's average and the positive news, I guess if you can find positive news on this, is the average death rate is, is between two and five from week to week. So the positivity rate with the, uh, Delta variant, uh, variant coming is there, but the death rate, uh, remains low and the hospitalization rate is somewhat low, but it is increasing. Uh, ninety-seven percent of the admissions into the hospitals are for people who are not vaccinated. Individuals who are becoming positive COVID, who have been vaccinated, most of the symptoms are very minimal a, at this point. So vaccination is still the key. Uh, we promote it and, uh, hope that that change, changes and, and we get more people vaccinated. Within Santa Fe Springs over the last fourteen days, um, Raylene touched on it. Uh, we have thirty-eight total deaths still in the city, no deaths over the last fourteen days, but an additional sixty-three residents or people who reside in Santa Fe Springs have tested positive. So that's the report for COVID. Uh, next slide. Two of our crews, one, the state crew on the green OES rig, and one of the crews on our red XLE, uh, Area E teams are both now up at the Dixie Fire in Plumas County. It's just north of Chico and, and Butte County. Uh, that fire is at two hundred and fifty-four thousand acres, but at this point, uh, they have thirty-nine percent containment. And so they're starting to release crews. Our, uh, red team, the XLE team, is coming home. They're, uh, halfway home right now. They'll bed down. They can't drive past ten o'clock during the evening. And the incident will put them up in, uh, hotels and then they should be home by noon tomorrow. The green OES rigs, their commitment is usually twenty-one days. And so we had just, uh, changed out with them last week. So we have a new crew up there that's been there about a week now. So, uh, very good, uh, progress with our guys. No injuries, no apparatus problems, uh, great spirits. I get reports two times a day and, uh, guys are really proud to serve. So that concludes that part of the report. Uh, lastly, we were, uh, approached by a company in commerce called United Plumbing, or Pumping. And they had, uh, a couple of pallets of, uh, wipes, sanitizers and things like that that they wanted to donate to the department. Well, we're pretty well stocked at the department. And so we reached out to Whittier PD and asked if they needed any, uh, supplies, uh, and police services. And, uh, last Saturday, we were just able to organize a, a, a group get-together where we distributed some of that out to the city of Whittier Police Services and then within our own department, uh, for, for prevention. So we'd like to thank, uh, United Pumping for their, uh, contributions. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Now I'd like to bring, bring up Director Finance, Travis Hickey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just, uh, two quick items to report to you. The council may recall back in March of this year, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed and had a number of, uh, COVID-related, uh, benefits. Uh, one of these was unlike the legislation that was passed in the previous year. With this one, government agencies could get a tax credit for some of the costs, uh, that we incur when employees miss work and we have to provide the paid leave. So the paid leave had been around for over a year, but, uh, the city wasn't unable to get reimbursed for any of those costs, uh, for paying employees to be off. So one of the things the American Rescue Plan Act did was make local government agencies eligible for that. And that began April first of this year. So, you know, fortunately, that was when we really started to see the numbers go down. So that April, May, June quarter was probably our lowest quarter we've had, really, at least since, you know, early on during the pandemic. But, but we did submit our first reimbursement for that and it was just shy of nine thousand dollars. So as the chief touched on, you know, we have seen sort of an uptick. And so, uh, just knowing what we've seen over the last, really even two and three weeks with, with employee exposures and, and time missed, um, you know, we do expect that, that amount, uh, to go up in the future. But, uh, these, it not only covers, uh, the, the time that they're off, the, the wages that they're paid for being off, also covers the payroll taxes, uh, prorated portion of their pension contributions, medical costs. So, so it's really a, a good deal for us that we, uh, at least get to offset some of that cost. Second item I want to touch on, oh, uh, last thing I wanted to mention on that Rescue Plan Act. And when I, when I looked at the amount, I thought, gosh, it seems kind of low, uh, when you talk about all the costs we can get. But for the most part, between April and June, most people missed one day or less of time primarily related to getting the vaccine. So whether it was time off to get the vaccine or a day or two, uh, fulfilling side effects after the vaccine. So we would get reimbursed for that time. So, um, moving on to the, the second one, you know, obviously with finance, the audit and the budget are our two biggest times of the year. And, you know, it feels like we've been, uh, working on the budget for a long time and we finally got that passed us. And so now here's audit season. We've, we had the auditors on site, uh, in mid-July, uh, doing the first phase of their audit. They'll be back in October for the final audit. Um, and then Metro, uh, has, we have a number of funding sources from them, Prop A, Prop C, Measure R, Measure M. Their audits are scheduled, uh, to begin in October of this year. And so, uh, just a heads up to the council audit subcommittee. I'll be working with, uh, Priscilla and Ray's office to schedule a, a kickoff meeting with, with the auditors. And so, uh, we'll be looking to schedule that in the next, uh, you know, several weeks. So we'll be in touch. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Now I'd like to bring up Maricela Padere, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Ray. Um, I have a couple of items to share with council this evening. I wanted to start off with the haunted house. So the solicitation of bids for the assembly of the haunted house panel walls that opened up last week on July the twenty-sixth. The bid opening is going to be held on August the seventeenth here at the council chambers. And the haunted house is currently scheduled to open on Thursday, October the twenty-eighth and will operate through Sunday, October thirty-first. And we're continuing to monitor the, uh, the COVID case rates and the, and the county public health requirements for indoor events and we'll keep you posted on that. Also, I'm happy to report, uh, that after a long, um, awaited opening that the Aquatic Center reopened to the public yesterday on August second for lap swim, rec swim, water aerobics, group lessons and also private swim lessons. Uh, I really want to thank the Santa Fe Springs High School because they were, uh, they allowed us to use their, their pool. Well, the Aquatic Center, uh, was down and under construction. So thank you very much to them. And then just a reminder that our Family Human Services Division is going to be hosting its annual back-to-school backpack program this coming Friday, uh, on August the sixth, from ten in the morning till two PM. And the event's going to be a drive-through pickup event over at the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center. Uh, so the caseworkers have been screening our, our residents and families, uh, via mail, telephone and the internet. And the participants are going to be informed to remain in their vehicles. And then the backpacks and all the school supplies are going to be placed in their trunks. And so we're inviting our council, uh, to help us with the distribution of the backpacks. And we ask that if you're interested in participating, that you please arrive at nine forty-five in the morning. And then, uh, lastly, uh, the Community Services Department, we've partnered with the LA County Public Health Department and we're going to host a free COVID vaccination clinic, um, at our last concert this Friday, um, August the sixth, when we're featuring our mariachi concert, which is mariachi ausente. The free COVID vaccination clinic is going to take place at Heritage Park, starting at six thirty PM. Uh, and the last participant will be accepted at eight PM. Uh, the vaccines will be Pfizer that'll be available for people that are twelve and, uh, twelve years and older. And the Johnson and Johnson vaccine will be available for the first hundred participants. So all people ages twelve through eighteen, they're going to need to be accompanied by a parent or a guardian and to get vaccinated, provide proof of age with a driver's license, a California ID, a passport or a school transcript. And if they have no ID, no form of ID, then a self-attestation form is going to be provided to the participants. And we're also going to advertise, uh, this information on all of our social media platforms. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Maricela. And Mr. Mayor, that ends our executive team reports. Thank you. Item number eleven, recognition of the twenty twenty-one Independence Day event sponsors. I'd like to call on Community Services Supervisor Leanne Yeta.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and community members and staff. The twenty twenty-one Independence Day event held on Saturday, July third, was a huge success with over thirteen hundred people in attendance. This year's event was much different than in previous years as we required registration for the event. The event featured horseshoe tournament, arts and crafts, a high-energy concert, followed by a twenty-minute spectacular fireworks show. The success of our Independence Day concert event would not have been possible without the support from our business community. This year's sponsors, Farmers and Merchants Bank and Republic Services donated greatly to the event's success and their support and generous contributions were greatly appreciated. This evening, we would like to take a moment to recognize our twenty twenty-one Independence Day sponsors, Republic Services and Farmers Merchants. Republic Services cannot be here this evening as they had a prior commitment with the National Night Out event, but we thank them for their support and kind donation. Joining us this evening from Farmers and Merchants Bank, we have Carlos Sciarro. We would like to call him forward to thank him for their kind and generous support of our event.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Leanne. Number twelve, appointments at boards, committees and commissions. Councilmember Sarno.
None tonight, sir.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Hi, thank you.
Councilmember Zamora.
None tonight.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez. And none for me today. Comments? Councilmember Sarno.
I'll make it really short since I get told I make it too long by some people. But, um, first I want to wish Mr. Planner himself a belated happy birthday, sir. You look awesome with your haircut and everything. Give him a round of applause, guys. Second, I want to thank Noe in Public Works, uh, number one, for allowing us to participate in Jim's, um, retirement, uh, party. I think, you know, even though it wasn't what we wanted to do, I think that was expressed better than coming here and doing it more traditionally. That was really showing the thirty-six years of love that everybody had for him. So I thank you for allowing us to participate in that. Thank you, Kevin, and for getting the lights and the safety up, uh, at a quick time and quick manner, really helping our community be safe. And, uh, it's very important for us to make sure that they feel safe, especially when we have things that are going on that are not very good. So, um, that's basically it. I'm not going to go crazy tonight. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you. Take it back off of Jay. Um, I actually talked to Mary, which is Jim's wife, at the rosary and she couldn't thank us enough. Um, and I had to tell her, no, don't thank us, thank Jim for doing what he did. That Jim's biggest thing was so happy that he was able to finally collect all the retirement things. The key was his best thing. He was, he loved that key. So, um, you just see the pride that Jim had for his city and that's something that we all have for our city. It, it's great. It's, it's wonderful to be working in the city and being up here as council member representing that. So thank you to you guys. Um, yes, the lights are great. Thank you. I said I'm out there every Thursday night with my, my two son-in-laws are out there playing softball. So I'm out there every Thursday now and it's, it feels very safe and very light, a lot of light. And you hear, and you see and you hear people playing. You see a lot of people walking again. It's great. Normality's starting to get back. So thank you on that. Thank you, uh, Wayne. Happy birthday again, you know. Thank you, thank you. I just have a little question, a little concern. We pride on, on safety and we pride on, on, you know, with our, our backing with our Whittier PD and everything. And all the cities around us are all doing national night out for, uh, for safety and all that. Why did we stop doing it for our city? Um, is there a reason why we're not doing it for our city? Because all the other cities around us, I mean, I've had residents telling me, we have, we're celebrating everything else, but when it comes to National Night Out, all the other cities have it except for us. Can we start doing that again? Yeah, I don't, I don't know why I ever stopped.
Uh, I'm not clear, but we'll, we'll discuss that.
And thank you. And just, uh, just keep Ken Arnold and his family in, in your prayers. They're, they're great family here in our city and they need a lot of prayers right now. So thank you. And it's great to see Mr. Gary in here. Just, you need your other half though. You don't look the same just by yourself there. So that's it. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Zamora.
Um, just to echo the same thing of what my colleagues are saying, you know, just the fact of, uh, the, how far we go for, uh, for a loved one, a family member, one of our employees who, um, pretty much was truly a blessing to our city. I mean, Big Jim was, was an awesome man and every time he came around, he would always crack a joke, joke around. Uh, you know, did his job and, you know, he was just always a pleasant person to talk to. Um, you know, to his family, you know, warm hearts and prayers, you know, always going out to them. Um, you know, the, the staff that really stepped up, you know, to actually arrange all of that. I mean, I know one person, Angel Molina, just the fact of what he did, I would like to thank him personally. And everybody else who stepped up for Jim. Um, it was, it was great. Noe, Kevin, um, thank you for doing what you did. And, um, thank you for, you know, just keeping us in the loop, you know, allowing us to participate. I know I was on vacation and, you know, out of the, out of the state when it, when everything took place. So, I mean, I'm just glad that, um, staff and employees are reaching out. And of course, you know, when it, anything we can do to help them out, any, any kind of support, um, anything we can do in the, in the future, just when it comes to an anniversary date for Big Jim or anything else, um, let the guys know that, you know, we're there for them and guys and girls. So, um, other than that, you know, employees, staff, keep doing what you're doing. You know, you guys, um, you know, do whatever you have to do to, to, uh, make this city successful. Um, city manager, just keep our city solvent, city attorney, you know, do what you do best. You know, and other than that, I mean, I just want to ask God to always bless this great nation, great city of ours. You know, God bless the city of Santa Fe Springs. Take care.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to echo about, uh, Big Jim, thirty-six years and what the staff did. You were great. I wish I were there. Um, unfortunately, again, I was out. My daughter was getting married in Mexico, so I couldn't be here. But, uh, what a great person to give thirty-six years to the city of Santa Fe Springs. And what a great staff to do what you did. And that picture is just priceless. It's just beautiful. And I want to thank you for caring so much to drive over there and, and give your condolences to the family when they need you the most. So thank you. And, uh, I wanted to say about the virtual wall. I, I'm so happy that we're doing something like that. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm so happy that we're going to have the bench. It's really important that we, uh, don't forget about COVID. It's really important that we don't forget about COVID and everything that we've been through in twenty twenty. And I just wanted to say, Chief Hayward, I got a call from our resident. She had our first responders go to her house, and she keeps calling me, asking me, who are the first responders? They treated me so good. I need to thank them. And I said, I'll get ahold of the chief and see if we could find out who these first responders are. But that's what I mean about our city of Santa Fe Springs and the staff and everybody that works so close with our residents and shows you how, their compassion. So that's what she wants to say. Thank you to everybody. And happy birthday, Wayne. I know you don't want us to say it, but happy birthday. And Lake Center City School District Board of Trustees, that we had, they had a backpack distribution on Saturday. I thought it was beautiful, and I, I saw our mayor there as well. But it was so beautiful to see the kids and how happy they were to get their backpack and school supplies. And our city is just fabulous. I want to thank all the volunteers and sponsors who were there. And the car, people who donated their car, parked it there. It was a beautiful event. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I think they've said it all. But just some of the important highlights is, you know, just my appreciation to staff and our police and fire. Your firm commitment to the city is just, it's just, it's amazing. And the story that I heard from Annette, you know, regarding our, our first responders, you know, these are stories that we hear over and over again, you know, from fire to police. So, you know, our appreciation to fire and police especially at this time. And also our strike teams, you know, we wish them the best of luck, wish them a safe return home, and just our appreciation for, for all that they do. I also went to the backpack giveaway. It was fantastic. Over three hundred and fifty backpacks stuffed with, gosh, everything that a kid's going to need for, for the entire school year. They had a little, just see a kid just light up when they got this little unicorn backpack or, you know, just backpacks. They were just not only playing jam sports, you know, they were actually some kind of cartoon character. And so that cooperation between the school district, Santa Fe Springs, and Newark, it was, it was amazing. And also, the, having something come to reality like that bench, that memorial. Because, you know, we've all faced this tough time during this past eighteen months, and it hasn't stopped yet. So I think that's something that, you know, at least, you know, pay honor and tribute to those that have passed practically unnecessarily. So really, thank you. I really appreciate what you did. And with that, happy birthday, Wayne. And we are now going to be going to closed session items for fourteen and fifteen. I'd like to call upon our city attorney, Ivy, to read the closed session report. Items, sorry, closed session item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Happy birthday, Wayne. Item fourteen is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, government code section five four nine five seven point nine D one. The name of the case is City of Santa Fe Springs versus S F S Hospitality LLC, case number two zero S T C V three three two six four. And item fifteen is public employment, government code section five four nine five seven B one, city manager evaluation.
Thank you. We will now reach into closed session, and we will reconvene the meeting after the closed session for any report and to adjourn the meeting. When we return, you'll be here, but we will be posing, excuse me, in memory of our friend, Jim Piloto. Thank you.